I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Londonderry School Board, School Administrative Unit Number 12 School Board and Londonderry School District School Board. And I see our town moderator is here. Would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Our first order of business is a public hearing on the question to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,100,000 to increase our operating budget approved at the district's annual meeting in March 2011 as a result of the $1,200,000 increase in state revenue the district will receive due to changes in state adequacy funding. May I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion by Steve, second by Ron.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. That's five nothing. The public hearing is now open. Nate?
Yes, a statement if I may. We are here to recommend a request to the school board the approval to hold a special election pursuant to chapter 211 of the 2011 legislative session. The purpose of this special election is to address significant changes to school adequacy funding and changes made by the legislature pertaining to their obligation to fund retirement. Both changes were approved by the legislature and communicated to us after the approval of the school district operating budget in March. As you are aware, the voters at the March election voted to improve an appropriation of $63,567,937 for the board to expend in order to provide the recommended level of service and education to the students of the district. The net appropriation was predicated on certain known revenues and estimated revenues from local sources to derive the aforementioned appropriation and with an estimated tax rate of $12.54. During the budget process, professional teachers, guidance counselors, administrators, and support positions were eliminated or reduced based due to enrollment and financial issues, one being the reduction of state adequacy grant. Our recommendation is not to bring back any of those reductions which comes to 87.6 full-time equivalents that were made during the budget process. Please keep in mind we have been adjusting our staffing levels based on decline in enrollment that we have been seeing. The two significant changes at the state level are an increase in approximately $1.2 million in state adequacy grant funds and the state legislature reneging on its promise to reinstate its 35 percent commitment to retirement premiums resulting in a $1.4 million hole in the approved operating budget. Once the district received communication of the change in retirement funding, the district was forced to freeze a number of positions, programs, and services in order to meet its legal obligation to pay the entire employer's share of retirement costs. However, it became clear that a number of positions placed on hold were vital to the level of services the community approved. After several administrative meetings, the district has proposed utilizing $300,000 from staff turnover, freezing all necessary equipment purchases to the tune of $200,000, and utilizing an additional $100,000 within the approved budget. Those measures were necessary to cover the cost of key positions we feel need to be reinstated before school opens in order to provide a minimum level of necessary classroom instruction. In the past, we have used staff turnover funds to cover budget overruns from substitute accounts and a contingency for any unanticipated issues. If the board agrees to move forward with this special election, we must follow the guidelines of the district charter. Therefore, the deliberative session without a quorum is scheduled for Tuesday, August 23rd at the high school cafeteria. Babysitting will be provided by the student council and the official election on October 11th at the high school gym. If the community supports the use of additional appropriations of $1.1 million out of the $1.2 million increase in state adequacy grant, the expected levels of service provided in the approved budget will be restored. The district will apply the additional state revenue of $1.1 million to offset the additional costs needed to fill the retirement hole. The use of staff turnover funds estimated at $300,000 will fill the gap between the $1.4 million shortfall and the requested $1.1 million. All positions, services, programs, and equipment purchases placed on hold will be restored. Net result of this is a decrease of the tax rate by three cents. If the special election for funding October 11th is not approved, the district will not be in a position to deliver the educational and co-curricular services approved by the community. A list of services that will not be required are $118,611 in support staff which includes an HR position, receptionist, computer support, after-school tutoring, summer school, the second semester of sports, class M sports, freshman teams, intramurals, elementary, middle school, after-school music, middle school co-curricula, additional professional positions that would not be filled, librarian, 40 percent of special curriculum, housemaster, two spec teachers, and a guidance teacher, professional development funds of $25,000, and after-school tutoring of about $35,000. We also have encountered additional costs due to changes in federal and state funding. The state has reduced the amount of money that it is reimbursing school districts for vocational tuition and transportation going from 75 percent down to about 51 percent or 52. That means a tuition increase of $895 to $1,673 for each vocational student. We have about 130 students that we send to Manchester and to Alverne. The net impact on us is $90,000. The federal government in the large S shorted us $23,000 on Title II A funding and also $89,000 on IDEA money. That comes to additional $202,000. In addition, equipment needs will remain on hold and the district will be forced to find additional funds in the operating budget resulting in further reduction of services to students, faculty, and community. The additional funds received from the state will be used to reduce the estimated tax rate if in fact there's a no vote on this. That would result in 36 cent reduction in the tax rate. The issue to be brought to light is the whole retirement issue. As always, we are acting on the most up-to-date information we have. There are many scenarios in regard to possible outcomes for retirement funding. However, we need to open schools in August. If future decisions regarding retirement funding provide a surplus of funds to the district, we will return these funds June 2012 to be used as revenue to offset the following year tax rate. So, in summation, basically what we're saying is the state eliminated its contribution to retirement. The net impact on us potentially is up to $1.4 million. On the other hand, they gave us an additional $1.2 million in adequacy aid. We're asking to transfer 1.1 of that additional revenue to the appropriation side so we can fill that retirement hole. Not to confuse the matters any more than I have to, the retirement issue is way up in the air. The state had contributed previously roughly $48 million to offset the employer's share of retirement. They are not doing that anymore. They have put $3 million in, $3 million plus in a kitty, and they are anticipating that a 2 percent increase in the employee rate may get them up to 25 percent. If in fact that's the case, that would leave us still short $414,000. I don't believe that the 2 percent plus the $3 million is going to get us to 25 percent. So, in fact, in conversations we've had with people, the net loss we think will incur will be about $775,000. In addition, we are paying the full employer rate as of July 1st. That's 13.95 percent. So, what we've got is we don't know how long it's going to take them, A, to recalculate the rates. We've heard anywhere from three to six months. So, if it goes to six months, because what they have to do to recalculate the rates are run figures on every employee in the retirement system to generate a number. So, even under the best-case scenario, we will be short. So, you take that amount of money plus the additional $200,000 plus that we need for the vocational monies and to meet the shortfalls for IDEA and Title II, we're already up there. And because we don't have an election, if this goes through till October 11th, we have issues, and if we don't know what the final numbers are till January, absent any action here, we could be in real big financial trouble. The other point I want to make is that we're using the teacher turnover money to cover the hiring for the beginning of the school year of a number of classroom positions. We would be two catastrophic illnesses away and a special education placement away of being in real trouble. So, that 300 could get eaten up in the blink of an eye. And last year, we put some additional controls and policies in place so that we limited the amount of money that we had spent on substitutes, all right? So, we were only over about $42,000. Previous years, we were, and we didn't have any catastrophic illnesses. Previous years, we were over anyways between 140 and 170 overall. So, and those numbers tend to reflect in those years, a number of instances where we had faculty that had significant illnesses. And as the Budget Committee knows and the board knows, we always, in the budget process, underestimate the amount of money that we are going to budget in the substitute account because historically we have picked up teacher turnover money. So, now, burning that 300,000 right away, we're freezing the 200,000 on equipment, and we're saying that we'll take another 100,000 for things that we would save by the second semester so that I don't have to reconfigure elementary classrooms on October 11th or October 12th, which doesn't make any sense to me at all. So, that has gotten us to this point where we are asking the board to consider taking the additional appropriation of adequacy and to have them ask the community to increase our appropriation by 1.1 so we can cover the cost of the loss of retirement that the state used to pick up, which we have not budgeted for, so that we can move ahead and provide the programs and services that everybody thought they were going to get when they approved the budget in March. That's where we are. And I can muddy the waters a little bit more just so everyone has a clear understanding. There are two pending lawsuits. One by a variety of unions claiming that the 2 percent increase is unconstitutional. If they prevail, then that 2 percent goes away. The old New Hampshire Board of Trustees also has filed a suit claiming that the state legislature rightly or wrongly set the wrong rates based on, not based on actuarial recommendations, and it actually underestimated. So, we could either wind up paying more or wind up having less money coming in from employees to cover the difference. So, in summary, what we're asking for is we know for sure somewhere between $700 and $800,000, we're going to be short even under the best of circumstances. Worst-case scenario, it could be worse than that. And if in fact we have been overly conservative in our concerns, the money that is left over will go to offset next year's tax rate. This way, it allows us to move ahead with the programs that people approve. We're not asking to reinstate programs or positions that were cut going into the budget process. This is just the positions, programs, and services that we told everybody they were going to have on the budget that everybody voted on in March. That's where we are, and that's why we're here today.
Any questions to Nate from the board? All right. I have one, Nate. What is the, just in terms of process, what is the outcome of the hearing that we're in now?
Yeah.
Do we close this with a motion to move forward?
Yes. It's the same procedure that we used during the normal budget process. The board would vote to move to the deliberative session, warrant article, in this case, to the tune of $1.1 million. We would then hold the deliberative session on the 23rd of August. Keep in mind that there's no quorum requirement, so people at deliberative session could adjust the warrant article up or down to zero. They can't touch the budget that has been passed. It's just this particular warrant article. So, people could add money in, and if it's approved by a majority of people at deliberative session, that's what would appear on the ballot in October. If they reduce it, that number is the number that would appear on the ballot in October.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. Todd, first of all, I'd like to welcome and thank the Budget Committee for showing up en masse. And Todd, you have a comment from the committee?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Just for the record, Todd Jankus, chairman of the Budget Committee. Given the, bit of the urgent nature of this particular issue, the Budget Committee felt it necessary to have our own little special meeting last week. We pulled it together rather quickly, and we discussed this issue at length at that committee meeting, and both Mr. Greenberg and Mr. Kuro were kind enough to be there to give us extensive detail that we went over. I could get into a lot of detail. I won't. I'll boil it down to a very important salient point. To me and the Budget Committee, it came to a head rather quickly. It looks as if we're going to be short about $1.4 million roughly on the retirement funding side from the state. However, the good news is the state has funded us about $1.2 million, more than anticipated, on the adequacy grant. It's simply a matter of voters, may we use this 1.2 to use it to support us on the $1.4 million shortfall? So, use the overage over here to pay for the shortfall over there. To us, it looks like a no-brainer. And the good news is evidently, instead of the 1.2 that is coming in additional revenue in the adequacy grant, we only really need about 1.1 million. So, that means about $100,000 if the voters vote for this. Guess what? It goes right to the taxpayer to the tune of about three cents per thousand. So, after we went through a lot of detail that I won't go into here, the Budget Committee actually took an official vote to support and recommend that the voters of this town support using the 1.2 million to backfill the 1.4 million. Actually, we voted on 1.1, which was the number that we were driving towards. So, I thought it'd be important for the community to know that, for the school board to know that, that we are in full support of supporting the 1.1 to be used to be re-appropriated, if you will, for the $1.4 million shortfall in the retirement side. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Great. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
All right. Floor is now open. Anybody who would like to make a comment, please come to the microphone. Just come on up to the microphone, state your name, and make your comment. I would ask that if you wish to make a second comment after your first one, you wait for everybody else to make a first comment, should that be necessary. Welcome to our first contestant.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Al Baldassal, 41 Hall Road. I'm not only here as a resident, but I'm also here as a state representative, as a chairman of the state federal relations veterans affairs committee. I read the article in the Londonderry, or the Derry newspaper concerning what's going on with the budget. First of all, I want to clarify, the governor's budget that was submitted to us, you'd have lost catastrophic aid, you'd have lost millions of dollars in education funding, there was many other areas that you would have lost. The 25 percent that the Democrats put in a couple of years ago was zeroed out in the governor's budget. We had a $900 million hole to fill. So, what we did was rather than downshift to the cities and towns, we had to come up with another plan. The people in finance, ways and means, I mean, worked, you know, for many, many weeks, days at a time till 11:12, 1 o'clock in the morning. The bottom line is, when I seen this saying that we were downshifting, I contacted the speaker, and I said, "What's going on?" We didn't downshift nothing. I voted on a budget that fixed this here. So, my town, my district would not have this retirement budget crisis. Now, I sent a letter to the chairman of the finance committee and also to Ken Hawkins, and I wanted to have him here tonight, but he was tied up to explain what went on. We don't set the rate on the retirement. The Board of Trustees does. Am I right, Mr. Greenberg? The Board of Trustees that just got set down one July?
Right.
Okay? They're the ones that set it. Now, we fixed that board. We came up with a new law, and what they did in order to stick it to the cities and towns to the House, they raised the rates because they knew as of one July, they were gone. And that's what they did. They stuck it to the cities and towns. Not the state legislator, not the Senate, okay? That board. Now, that board is being replaced now. A new board is taking place. Their meeting, and I got from the, on one August, they're meeting again. They're going to put the rates back where they were, okay? Now, what was told to me was by raising the employee contribution, which don't even come close to the private sector, okay, 2 percent, that would help the cities and towns, okay, by not putting out, the taxpayers putting out more money, because that's their money they're getting back, okay? So, now, I personally, after talking with the Ken Hawkins, Representative Hawkins, and Chairman Wyler, he thinks we may be jumping the gun here, that we should be waiting for that board for one August there because the rates are going to be reset. The cash flow, once it starts going with the employee contributions, will catch up. And in the long run, they state that the cities and towns will be better off, okay, on this here, yes?
Al, there's some parts of your comments I agree with, but here's the issue. The guess was, at very best, the 2 percent employee increase and the changes they made in retirement would only get us to the 25 percent. We had been told, and when we said our budget was based on 35 percent. So, even if, under the best of circumstances, the employee rate increase of 2 percent and this, I'm including the rate of return change set in HB2, may only get us to 25 percent under the best conditions. Plus, they're really, even the state, I don't think, is sure. That's why they put in the $3 million, they're hoping.
Actually, the number I got here from was .4, 4.5.
Excuse me one second here. A couple of things seem to be going on here. One is that if we are in fact jumping the gun, then we'd have an opportunity to address that at the deliberative session in the end of August.
Right. But, here's part of the issue. Anyways between three and six months, it's going to take the retirement system to recalculate the impact of the 2 percent to get a number, all right? So, that leaves us possibly going into November, maybe January, not knowing exactly what the number is going to be. Even at its best, we're still going to be $414,000 short from the way we budgeted, all right?
Is it possible you can give me what you have, what they sent you on this, what they're telling you they're going to do? I personally will take it to the state, and then I will have them look at this here and saying, "Somebody's giving us wrong information," because the 4.5 million was supposed to offset, so you wouldn't have to.
To 25 percent. That's what they said, to 25 percent.
The 25 percent has been there for a couple of years now, or a year, right?
But what they had told us was, when we went into the budget process, that the state was going to go back to 35 percent. So, when we looked at the employer rate, all right, we made the assumption, because that's what we were told, that we would only have to pay 65 percent of the employer rate because it was, 35 percent was going to be reimbursed. Under the state's calculations and what they stated was, it would, under the best of circumstances, it would get to 25 percent. So, if it gets to 25 percent, all right, our district is still short $414,000. If there's, and then on top of that, because the state is contributing less to vote tuition and transportation, impacting us to the tune of about $90,000, and because we were shorted on IDEA and also Title II, we're now taking that, now over $600,000, okay? Plus, I'm using, I'm freezing $200,000 worth of equipment to get us where we are. So, even under the best of circumstances, I'm still significantly short. The jury is still out on what the 2 percent is going to generate. There is still some issue regarding as to what the employer contribution rate is because one of the lawsuits by the old trustees, okay, they set a higher contribution rate for the employers. The bill set a lower contribution rate for the employers, which was 13.95, right, Peter? So, that's still up in the air. So, our issue here, from a purely operational point of view, is there is so much uncertainty, except for the fact that we know that at the very best, we're going to be short 10 percent on what should have been the retirement, plus the $200,000 shortfall, combination of vote tuition and transportation as well as the federal government. We've got a big problem. And I've got school opening up in a month roughly, and the election won't take place until October 11th. So, I've got major operational issues. When we went through the budget process, we cut really fine. I mean, we eliminated programs and positions, and we took into account enrollment, we took into account drop in revenue. We're not asking to put those back. Once, after the budget was approved, all right, we had all this stuff going on with the retirement system, right? So, we froze $1.4 million worth of programs, positions, and services that had been in the approved budget, okay? Not the stuff that we already cut. So, now, what we're looking at, and I guess the best way I can, best analogy I can give, is we're looking for an insurance policy with a high deductible. I know somewhere between $600,000 and $800,000 guaranteed we've got to come up with, okay? And that's why we're, and what we're asking for is that money, the additional adequacy money which you gave us. The only way we can spend that is if the school district voters approve an increase in our appropriation, because we can't.
We have no issues with that, Mr. Greenberg, on the 1.2 million?
Right.
What my concerns are, and like I talked with Senator Sharon Costin, she wished she could have been here tonight, because we fought for everything, making sure. We were told no downshifting.
Right.
And when we seen this here, I want to take whatever you have, that the retirement board numbers are sending you, and I personally tomorrow will go there and then question because we were, in other words, I might lie to by other, you know, state.
Hang on, Nate.
I will straighten it out for you.
If Al is offering to do that, can we have that discussion offline so we can let other people?
Sure.
So, we can move ahead with the hearing?
Right. The issue is I want to make sure that the people know that it's not the state reps, it's not the Senate. We did everything we could to ensure there was no downshifting to protect our schools on. was no downshifting, to protect our schools, and making sure we got money. And I remember listening to you, John, before, where you say, "Wow, the way the budget is, the way the budget is." We made sure you're gonna save money for two years.
Al.
Two school years. So we made it for budgeting.
Yeah, Al, what you gotta remember is there are multiple pockets of money from the state, and they took different actions. Yes, they gave the adequacy, okay? But at the same time, the action on retirement, okay, at the very minimum, all right, went from, at the very maximum, okay, went from 35 percent to 25 percent, no matter how they reconfigure it. Because that's what they said, is kept. So a downshifting of cost, okay, was retirement, at least, at least $414,000 for us, all right? No matter how they configured it. Because that 25 percent, going from 35 to 25, they had told us 35, and the employer, employee increase, and the other changes, the maximum you're gonna get is 25. So for us, it's 414. Reduction in vocational tuition and transportation, that's a downshifting of costs. So there's another $90,000, all right? So you have a combination here of a downshifting of costs from, on retirement, okay? Downshifting of costs from federal government to us, okay? And what we're asking for is, they downshifted on this side, they made us pretty close to hole on the adequacy, right? So what we have to do, the position we're in now, is we have to get voter approval to move that adequacy money, in a sense, to the appropriation side. Otherwise, we can't spend that money to fill the hole that's created by retirement.
I just wanna make sure that we, my town, my district is not being stuck to-
Right.
...on a downshift in retirement. That's why I'm here, to make sure if you can send me anything you have-
I'd be happy to.
...and I will go up there, because we were made promises on this here.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you. Ron, you had a comment. Stand around, Al.
Al, Al, as we're speaking about this, let's get the, we speak about the real numbers. The $1.2 million and the $1.4 million, you know, the 1.2 adequacy that wasn't in the original budget, that we had the previous year, that we got back, and the 1.4 makes a $2.6 million hole. Let me just finish that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? In our regular budget of March, we took care of a big portion of that by reducing programs and items. That isn't coming back. What we're doing with the adequacy money now is filling the second hole the state governments, I'll use the big state government, has put us in with the retirement fund. If, if we were getting everything back, and there was no downshifting in cost, the tax rate would not have gone up. It would have gone down. Because I would have the 1.2 million, and then I would have had the 1.4 million worth of retirement. So however you slice it, you minimize, I can congratulate the team for minimizing the effect on us, but there was effect on the taxpayer that they need to pick up additional dollars because of those two changes. We, we had cut programs, and there was a change. We lost $1.2 million in revenue to start with. That was there the year before our revenue numbers went down. That's a fact of life. And that happened in March.
Your revenue gonna drop every year anyways, because you're losing children.
Not 1.2 million dollars.
Right, I understand that, but I'm saying what your special needs-
And we are aggressively managing that. And when enough children disappear to allow us to reduce headcount, or classrooms, or things such as that, we've been aggressive in doing that.
Here's, here's the other thing too. On one side, you can say, "Well, we didn't downshift retirement costs." But you have to keep in mind, two years ago, the state's contribution was the equivalent of 35 percent. Then after the budget was passed two years ago, they said, "Okay, we're not doing 35, we're doing 30, and then we're gonna go to 25," which was last fiscal year. We were forewarned on that.
Yes.
Okay? But they also said at the time they passed that law, "When that two-year cycle is over, you're going back to 35 percent." All right? So 35 percent of the employer's share. All right? So what hap, what, so the difference then, if they had gone to the 35 percent, instead of us picking up 13.95 percent, we'd only be picking up 9.06 percent. That's what we had counted on. Okay? So if the argument is, we didn't downshift the cost, because we kept it at 25 percent, they can make that argument. But that's not what was told to us two years ago, and then reinforced again when we had to put the budget together. So from our perspective, we assumed, wrongly obviously, that the state was gonna pick up the 35 percent, which is what they told us. So when we put our budget together, we said, "Okay, if the rate's gonna be 13.95, we have to budget 9.06," right? Because the money doesn't, as you know, the money doesn't show up either on the appropriation side or the revenue side. It goes from the state coffer to the retirement system. It's never shown up. So all we have to pay is our 65 percent. So what happened was, when, because even with all this stuff, you're still only getting to 25 percent, when we had made the assumption in the budget, based on what the previous law had been, and what we had been told, that it was 35 percent. So what we've got is that 10 percent, a minimum, that 10 percent hole, which for us is the equivalent of $414,000. Okay? Plus the other couple hundred thousand dollars that I had talked to you about. Okay? The catastrophic aid is only gonna come in, and, just so you're aware, what we've been told is cat aid is gonna come in at about 61 percent of what we're supposed to get. Now, it's not a huge number, but still, again, it's 61 percent of what we should be getting. So-
It should have been more than what you got last time.
Uh, no, it's about the same as, it'd be, the percentage is gonna be about the same as we received this year. All right? So when we look at the total revenue picture, I've gotta take into account the adequacy money, catastrophic aid, building aid, which I'm thankful for that people are funding at full level. So Medicare, Medicaid, all that stuff, all the stuff that we've got for revenues. All right? And then in addition to that is our federal funding that comes in, the IDA grant, the Title II money, and all that other stuff. So the state's funding comes in multiple pockets. All right? Then the other part that doesn't show up as revenue, but is taken into account when we put the whole budget together, is the whole retirement thing. We had predicated our budget on 35 percent. So when we put the money in, we put it in at nine, for the employer contribution at 9.06 percent, as opposed to 13.95. Now what, we haven't calculated as of yet, okay, is any changes in the 13.95 percent, because we've been paying that since July 1. It's still, the jury is still out as to when those numbers are gonna, final numbers are gonna come in, so, and it's not retroactive. So if it runs through, let's say, September, we're paying full boat, Ju, July, August, and September. We don't get that money back. All right? So it, and then on top of it, and I'm just talking from our organizational perspective, okay, the waters are very muddy because of competing, of multiple lawsuits, waiting on to see how much money the 2 percent employee rate increase generates. So from a purely insurance point of view, in saying, "We promised this level of programs and services. We know for sure we got this hole." There's a whole bunch out here in a cloud, if you wanna call it that, that is uncertain, because the actuarials have not run all the numbers yet. We don't know. There's still a possibility that the employer rate may go up, or down, or sideways. So we have all this, and we got school to open up on August 25, 6, 7, 8, end of August, whatever.
Hopefully, the pressure that we put on-
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
If you can send me whatever you can, I don't wanna beat you, because I know you could all have something else to do. If you can, because my concern was on the downshift in the retirement, and on what that, the trustees did before they stepped down-
Right.
...you know, to the cities and towns. If you can get me whatever information, whatever numbers-
You have-
...and then I'm gonna go up there, because a lot of us are gonna put the pressure on this new board, because the executive already, council already put everyone in place, except one of the governor's appointees.
And, and, because part of it is predicated on the rate of return. But here, here's the other thing that everybody's gotta be careful of. Depending if you, if there's a change in the rate of return, I think it was, it's 8.25, right, Peter? And some people are talking about it being 7.75, or whatever. Okay? A lot of that then is gonna be, to see how much money it generates, right, or doesn't generate, and how much the employee rate increase is going to generate.
Right.
Okay? But what I know for sure is, what we have been told, and, was that the maximum amount, the very maximum amount that this is going to generate, is 25 percent. The, what would be the equivalent of 25 percent of the employer's share. We assumed 35 percent because we were told it was going to be 35 percent.
If I may, just, on what Representative Hawkins, he's the one that chaired the retirement, I know they tried and looked at bringing it back to 35 percent, but with the $900 million hole, and you know, you've been up there-
Right.
...quite a bit, there was just no way, because they would have had it taken out somewhere else.
And so getting back to square one here-
Still beat the zero from the governor.
Right. Getting back to square one here, from our perspective, in our school district, in our town, we know we're gonna be short money. Right? What we want to do is simply take the increased revenue that's coming from adequacy, not all of it, and applying that to the appropriation side, so we can expend it, to fill the hole that's created by retirement and other shortfalls. That's it. And we're not asking for all the 1.2, we're asking for 1.1. That $100,000 reduces the tax rate that everybody agreed, well, people voted on, by three cents. It may not be a lot of money, but it's still a reduction of 3 percent. And if everything works out hunky-dory, okay, and we don't have to spend all that 1.1, because of the retirement, whatever the retirement numbers come to, we'll return it. And that will offset the tax rate for FY13. In the meantime, it guarantees that we can run the programs and services, that we promised people we would run when they approved the budget in March. It's always, and so this, it's a, it's a god-awful gamble if we don't get the money. If we get the money, it's a, from my perspective, as both a citizen in the town and a taxpayer, it's a no-lose. Right? It's a no-lose. Because if we don't have to spend the money because the retirement's, because it's so bizarre, but it guarantees we have the money to hire the staff that we said we were gonna hire, run the programs that we said we were gonna run, I have the same number of buses that we were gonna use to pick up kids. We have it. And if, and if we, it turns out, because of the retirement stuff, we don't need all of that money, okay? We don't need a couple hundred thousand dollars of it. Terrific. We'll show it up as a fund balance at the end of the year, and it will go to offset the tax rate for FY13. Can't lose.
Okay, um, Ron.
Al, one of the things you said is that we're jumping the gun. And one of the things that you have to remember, not like the legislature, we can't vote within a week or two. Let's say we waited till the October date that you said. The earliest we can have election is somewhere February, March 1st. The school year's over.
August 1st, I think, is when they're meeting. But then you have issues with the Title II and some other areas. And we all knew about the cut on the special needs buses, because one of the questions was asked about that. And what came up with, to us was, there are plenty of parents out there that should be helping the district out with these special schools, since the district are paying thousands of dollars that they could be driving them to these schools. That was one of the reasons with those cuts.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm-
I'm trying to give you what the truth is.
Right, but all I'm saying is, what I'm just saying is, the timeframe for an election for us virtually makes the 1.2 million. If we don't act today, the students in the school district would bet, would suffer from that, because we could not make up the 1.2 million. The superintendent would have to increase the size of classes. He would not be able to do what he's doing today if we don't do that. And that's the fundamental problem. We don't have the option of waiting. Time is not on our side. This is the same speech that I gave when the legislature was here. Every day that we wait, we are affecting the education for the 2011, 2012 children in our school district by reducing services if we don't take this as soon as possible.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know how else to say it.
If I may, in closing-
Hang on, everybody. I, I'd like to suggest that we move forward. We've made, we've covered a lot of ground multiple times so far. I think that regardless of who at the state level, or the local level, or what, is not paying for, for what, I think we can agree that we have a hole in our, in our budget, and we have money that we could use to spend it. And the question before us is whether we go ahead and do that. Can we agree on that?
Yes.
Does that sound right, Al?
Oh, no, that, that sounds right.
So can I, can I have your, can I have your opinion on whether we should go ahead and do that?
If I may, since you put me on the spot, does that sound right? Right now, you don't know for sure.
No, I was asking everybody, Alan. I was asking you.
Because I don't know for sure if that hole's there, because the, until August 1st, and that we fix, when that board meets. That's why I wanna find out for you.
Okay.
And then otherwise, yes, you do. I'll have to agree.
Okay, fine. Al and Nate will work on getting that information to you, so that you can, you can verify that assumption?
Yes, definitely. And I will go up there and see why they're downshifting to us, when we were promised there was no downshift.
I know. Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cindy?
Thank you. Cindy Rice Conley, 373, Winding Pond. I was just curious as to what the public hearing was about, because I was getting really confused, but you clarified everything. Thank you.
Okay. Next, anybody else? Come on up. If any, if you'd like to speak, come on toward the front of the room, and we'll just move along as, as soon as the person before you finishes. Hi.
Hi, I'm Madeline Heath Demuehl, 29A Boyd Road. I have to work in a few minutes, so actually, I'm late, because I wanted to stop by and say this. I'm really concerned that this money not be put back in, because I think that, that period of time that Mr. Greenberg is talking about, of having a shortfall, is critical when you look at individual students. And I think that that keeps getting lost in these discussions about money. I, you know, I'm a political junkie. I love all this stuff. I follow it really closely, state, national. I'm also ultra-liberal. I think we need to pay for things that people need. But I think one of the things that really concerns me is that we don't always put faces on these dollars. If we are short for four months, hundreds of thousands of dollars, what portion of one child's education gets neglected, because he's in a class that's too big, or the teacher, there isn't a qualified teacher in that class, or, and I think that's really important. Like, what, what percentage of that sight word that kids don't learn, what about, what if it's the word that says "not," and it's "do not cross" on a cross street, you know, crossing a street? So that's the percentage of his education he missed. It's the word "not." So he crosses when it says "do not cross." What prescription, what prescription bottle can you read with 20 percent less adequacy? You know? I think that we have to stop really thinking about, these are kids, these are people, this is, and I think the same thing has been true with the human service budget. We're gambling. And I implored the board at the last time I was at the deliberate, deliberate session, I am concerned about the programs that were cut, that you legitimately spent hours and thousands of hours studying. And I would like to see the board study very carefully the results, to see what happens with all those programs that we've had to cut, and the teachers that we've already had to lay off. I think we have to watch very carefully to see what happens now. Because I know at my house, when my daughter moved out, we didn't good, we didn't drop our expenses 25 percent out of a family of four.
I'm, I'm sure that we will be working at that-
And I, I wanna see stats, figures, statistics, data. I don't want just narrative points of view. And I'm really concerned about this cut. So I implore everyone to go ahead and trust the school district. We'll spend that money as it sees fit, to give the programs that the, that the community voted on already. And I think we should really think about the individual student when we're voting, not numbers, not statistics, not which program gets reinstated, or what pocket it comes out of. I don't think we can afford to take that gamble. And, you know, I, like I said, I have to leave, but I really, really implore you to consider that I'd rather have the money returned at the end of the year, because we made a mistake, and we got more than we expected, than have students not learn, "do not cross." You know, seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming down. Appreciate it. Any, uh, floor is open? Any additional comments?
Seeing as Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move this to deliberative session.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Ron, second by Nancy, to move to-
To August 2nd, 2011.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's five, nothing.
Chairman, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Nancy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five, nothing. Thank you very much. Public hearing is closed. Thank you very much, members of the public who came out to express your points of view this evening. Okay, Paul. Thought I saw you. Paul?
This is Paul?
Yes.
That's Sean. That's Sean. Thank you. Paul Margolin with the Beautify Londonderry program. There's only one done in Londonderry.
Um, Mr. Chairman, we have.
Could you use the microphone, please?
Yeah. We have a flash drive and presentation. Where can we plug that in?
Peter?
Right here.
Floor is yours. Proceed when you're ready.
All right, thank you. I am against Paul Margolin. I'm here representing the Sodder Waste Committee that coordinates and oversees Beautify Londonderry each year. I'm here with Carrie Stanley, who is one of our three or four key coordinators, volunteer coordinators, who have been actively making this program happen the last two years, ever since we lost the town's administrative support specialist who ran it from the offices. So, we're very thankful for her efforts and those of the other volunteers who make that happen. And we had a very good, very productive town cleanup again this spring. And we wanted to share the results with you, in particular, focus on what happened in the schools and on school properties. And just before we get into this, I'd also like to mention that Carrie, for at least a couple of years, has been volunteering at South School. I believe Carrie, that's in Mrs. Duval's class?
Yes, Mrs. Duval's fifth-grade class.
And would I just say, describe a little bit about what you've been doing in her class?
Um, this is the second year she asked me to come in. She does a, an educational aspect in her teaching. And last year I went in, and this year I did too, and she does a whole unit on, you know, pollution and, and everything. So, she invited me to come back, and we do a quick overview, and, and then the kids get really gung-ho and excited, and they, they're just garing to go. She always does it around the Beautify Londonderry time, which is nice. So, then she, they go around outside the school, and they help pick up the trash around the school, which they did again this year. And some of them even went outside of the school and did it in their neighborhoods. So, it's nice to get them educated and involved. I was on the phone.
Sean, you've been spending too much time with Peter.
No, I. My company used to make slides.
I know, huh?
The worst thing we had to worry about is they were upside down.
Right. That's why it's over.
Slides, what are they?
They came after film strips.
Oh, okay. With a little beep on the, on the.
I'm full of school on my computer. Yeah, but it was just off to the side.
They were the ones that had the curl of film above the lens.
Oh, I don't know.
It went a little thirty-five millimeter continuing.
Yeah. They were thirty-five, weren't they? I never thought of that.
Full frame.
I know, huh?
We used to have these. We had, we had an entire department dedicated to making slides to go with speeches. I mean, here comes PowerPoint, and they're out of business. It's amazing.
Yeah, better though. You never know when the batteries in your calculator are going to go out, so you've got to still carry your slide roll. That's what I was in school.
I know. Well, this is digital. But that's not the problem.
This just keeps getting worse.
It came out this morning, and the full semester was mandatory. Yep. Yeah, and they went from adding and subtracting to logarithms and the like, and over and out.
Okay, while, while we're working on this, members of the board, can I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on the consent agenda, including the resignation of Rebecca Harris.
Is there a second? Second. Uh, second motion by Ron, second by John. On the consent agenda, we have meetings coming up on August sixteenth here, at the town offices, seven P.M. That's a regular meeting. Building tours on August twenty-second, that's Matthew Thornton, Moose Hill, and South School. Are we starting at Matthew Thornton?
Yes.
Yes.
So, that's meet at Matthew Thornton at six P.M. All are invited. The deliberative session is the next night.
Great Budget Committee event.
Excuse me?
Great Budget Committee event.
Yeah. The deliberative session is August twenty-third, in the LHS cafeteria. That's at seven P.M. And second half of building tours is August twenty-fourth, starting at North School at six P.M. Oh, by the way, the Tuesday night is Matthew Thornton, Moose Hill, and South School. The Thursday night is North School, Middle School, High School, and District Office. And we have a regular meeting here on August thirtieth at seven P.M. Somewhere in the middle of all of that, school actually starts, so that'll be fun, too. The twenty-ninth.
Right.
Happy anniversary, Carrie. Mary, do you, moving on to committee reports, Mary, do you? I'm sorry? Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please, okay, that's five-nothing. Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, Mary, do you have CAFAs available?
I do.
CAFA, our school board rep, had another commitment tonight, but she thoughtfully did send along her report, which Mary will read into the record for us.
CAFA wrote that even though it is summer vacation for students and teachers around Londonderry, individuals have been refurbishing computers, cleaning the school, and doing some classroom and office reorganization at Londonderry High School. The Londonderry High School marching band and color guard continue to hold their weekly summer band practices each Thursday night from six to eight P.M. The Lancers are hard at work on learning their new music for their halftime show for the two thousand and eleven football season. From August fifteenth until August eighteenth, the LHS band and color guard will hold their annual four-day band camp at Londonderry High School. During this camp, the Lancers will learn the motions of the halftime show. There will be a preview of the performance on Thursday, August eighteenth, around three P.M. Everyone is allowed to come and see the Lancers perform. Lifting has also been taking place each week for football players and any other athletes that wish to participate.
Thank you very much, Mary. Thank you, CAFA. Our teacher representatives are not here this evening, as is tradition over the summer. We hope they're having a good vacation. School board liaison reports. Nancy, anything? John? Ron? Steve? And nothing from the talking furniture. Jay, does your presentation require our audiovisual?
No, sir.
Technology? Nate, can we move on to the superintendent's report?
Sure can.
Okay, Jay?
Good evening. I'm pleased to share information and statistics that our guidance director, Michael Dolphin, gave to us recently on the class of two thousand and eleven. Eighty-eight percent of our graduating seniors are going on to two- and four-year colleges and universities, some of the best in the country. The other twelve percent are attending either the workforce, entering the military, or enrolled in specialized programs. What's exciting is, with the articulation agreements that we have with a variety of colleges, forty-six percent of our graduates are attending those schools. And those schools include Colby Sawyer, Franklin Pierce, Keene State, Manchester Community College, Nashua, Nashua Community College, New England College, New England School of Communication, New Hampshire Institute of Art, NHTI, Northern Essex, Plymouth State, Riviere College, Southern New Hampshire University, Suffolk University, UMass Lowell, UNH Durham, and several other schools. One hundred seventy-five seniors from LHS who have graduated will receive collectively two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, five-hundred dollars for the eleven-twelve school year. That's a four-year yield of one million, two thousand dollars. So, it's just incredible what these articulation schools can do in the way of scholarships for our, our students. In addition, we're sending our graduates to many other outstanding schools, such as American University, Arizona State University, Berklee College of Music, Boston University, Holy Cross, Dartmouth College, DePaul University, Drexel University, Embry-Riddle, George Washington University, Hofstra, Iowa State, James Madison, Johns Hopkins, Manhattan School of Music, Northeastern, Northwestern, Norwich University, Penn State University, Providence College, Purdue, RPI, RIT, San Diego State, Salve Regina, St. Anselm's College, SUNY, Temple University, the University of Alabama, University of Colorado, UConn, Delaware, Maryland, Michigan, Miami, Rhode Island, UVM, the University of Wisconsin, U.S. Air Force Academy, Virginia Tech, West Virginia University, Wheaton College, WPI, and WELOC. And that's really a credit, we believe, to all of our schools in this district K-12, that the schools that they attend, the colleges and universities they attend, and they come back in January and in May, these seniors, a lot of them, and they'll share their experiences with our juniors and seniors, how well they're prepared for college, how well they had done their freshman year, and share a little bit about their college experience. So, it's been fantastic. Again, a lot of our students are seeing great sums of money in the way of scholarships, so. Please.
Questions from the board?
Yes, Sean? Just two quick comments. One, the, our students who attend the two-year colleges in Massachusetts on the articulation agreement, if in fact they complete their two years there and decide they want to go on to a four-year college in Massachusetts, because it's an articulation agreement with that school, they pay in-state Massachusetts rates. They don't pay out-of-state rates.
Really?
Yes. And what we're also seeing, too, is because of some changes in the manner in which the community college system is working in the state of New Hampshire, their students can go and pay, do their first two years at a community college in New Hampshire and have a direct path to, and, a four-year state university, UNH or Plymouth or what have you, and not lose any credits on that transfer. Plus, in some cases, it actually saves parents money. If you're going to a two-year community college, the tuition is a bit less than, let's say, the first two years at UNH. So, some, some students are opting because of financial reasons, in fact, to do that. Also, the only other thing I wanted to mention was, on the backup stuff, there was a typo. If you add up the number of students going to four-year and two-year, comes to seventy-seven percent. It really should come to eighty-seven, because I think it's twenty percent, right?
Correct, twenty-point-five percent at the two years.
So, I think what you're looking at, as far as return on the dollar, since we're talking about money and all this other stuff, but really focuses on students. Almost ninety percent of our graduating class goes on to two- and four-year colleges. Another percent goes on to training programs, others go into the military. They're getting over four years, just on the articulation agreements alone, one million dollars in, in scholarship money. The dropout rate in our district is less than a quarter of a percent, right? The graduation rate for this class was ninety-nine-point-six-seven percent. So, if you want to talk about return on investment, here you have a significant number of kids, almost ninety percent, going on to two- and four-year schools, as well as training programs. Huge amounts of money for scholarship to defray costs going to colleges, a very low dropout rate. So, I think it's well worth noting that, based on that, I think people are getting a good return on their investment dollar, as far as education is concerned. And if you add up the last several years, as far as articulation agreements, we're pretty close to three million dollars off, that kids have gotten, will have gotten over four-year period of time to offset college costs. And as you know, even going to UNH, it's going to cost you eighteen, nineteen, twenty thousand dollars a year. So, you can save significant amounts of money, and that's not to mention the hundred-and-forty, hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of scholarships that were given out at Baccalaureate, right? Pretty close.
As I tell everybody, try it with twins.
Yeah.
If I, if I may, though, this is one of those really important subjects that we refer to by a name that we all know, but I think that a lot of people might not be aware of exactly what an articulation agreement is. Could one of you fine gentlemen please say that out?
I'd be happy to, and Jay. Basically, we have a contract with twenty-two colleges and universities that basically stipulates, if a youngster graduates from Londonderry High School and attends one of those twenty-two institutions, depending on what their grade point average is, there's a sliding scale as to what the scholarship will be. In some cases, it's up to like fifteen thousand dollars a year. So, simply by graduating and being accepted at that, at that college, in that agreement, is guaranteed, if you get accepted to that college and your GPA, let's say, is three-point-five, just for the sake of argument, you will get ten thousand dollar scholarship. It's phenomenal. So, if you're a parent in that situation, over four years, that's forty thousand dollars that you don't have to pay. That's a nice hunk of change.
So, if you're a parent of a high school junior or a senior, this is something that you're going to want to be hearing about?
Absolutely.
What do we do, what do we do to publicize that?
There's a lot of information nights. Mr. Dolphin hosts a lot of parent nights and bridging, bridging that gap to college. So, he'll have a financial aid night, he'll have college-as-possible night for different grade levels, and the parents will come out to hear about the articulation agreements, schools, majors, and a lot of options that are available to them. In addition to the scholarship money, they'll waive the application fees in a lot of cases as well. And that gets, that adds up with, with our kids applying to a lot of schools.
Yeah. Questions? John?
Jay, two things. I don't even know if you can answer these, these two questions. The first question is, of the kids that receive the scholarships, how many actually complete to the degree? Is, is the first one. Do we have any statistic on that?
I don't believe we have. A few years ago, we were looking to track the four-year graduation rate from colleges and universities. We haven't come up with an exact system to do that.
Yeah, it is difficult.
But that is something we have talked about.
Right. It would be interesting to find that. The, the other question that I have is, what percentage of this money is actually a percentage of the overall cost for college? So, you know, ten percent, five percent, two percent, fifty percent. Do, do we have that number?
I do not, but I can get that for you.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know how much we defer costs over to in a four-year college. Just for these kids. From personal experience, I'd say at Keene State, it's probably in the neighborhood of a quarter of the bill for tuition, room, and board.
And you generally tend to get bigger scholarships at private colleges and universities than you do it from the state in the articulation agreement. So, some of our, if I remember correctly, and I may be off a couple of thousand, I think one of the highest grants we get through the articulation agreement is something like fifteen thousand dollars a year off of that. So, you know, it's, it's a good deal, and the credit has to go to Mike Dolphin. Mike really pushed the articulation agreements. And it's really phenomenal. And that, plus, as the board is aware, is on top of our Bridges program and our other programs, which allow kids to get, to get dual credit. In other words, college credit plus high school credit towards graduation. So, if students pick up, you know, three, four courses at a reduced rate, you know, that's not bad either, you know, considering what, what people are paying, because the Bridges program, kids pay less than you would pay if, in fact, you were going straight to the community college. And one of the things that we're looking, we're going to be looking at is different ways in which we can increase the number of college credits kids can earn while they're still in high school. So, that's something that we're looking at down the road. We're looking at a couple of different options. But we think that's something that's a plus. But we've been pushing the Bridges program, running Stark Program is another, is another program where kids can pick up college credits while they're in high school. Obviously, the AP courses, depending on which college you go to, can get you advanced standing when you go on to college. So, we're looking and have implemented a variety, variety of avenues for kids that want to go on to either a two- or four-year school to pick up credits, which in turn saves money and allows kids to, to move, to graduate sooner if they want, and/or save significant amounts of money through articulation agreements, or through the Bridges program, too. So, those are, you know, really pluses for going, graduating from Londonderry High School and participating at Londonderry High School. So, it's a really cool thing.
Go ahead.
Jay, of, of the scholarships that you have here, how many are based on athletics?
I'm not sure this year. I can check with, double-check with Howard. Last year it was nine.
Okay.
I, I don't want to throw out a figure, so let me check with Howard, and I can get a number on the athletics.
And.
Several music, I don't know.
Yeah, of course.
Sean, you bring up a good point, too, because oftentimes, kids that may be on the cusp as far as certain schools are concerned, because of their extracurricular activities. cusp as far as certain schools are concerned, because of their extracurricular activities and in sports, that gets them over and gets them in, into the college because of their participation in co-curricular and extracurricular activities. And that's, I think, one of the reasons the board has been so good in supporting those co-curricular and extracurricular programs, because not only is it a scholarship issue with, with the number of kids, but on the, the applications that kids put in, it says, "I played football, or lacrosse, or volleyball, or in the band," that's an added bonus. And I know from talking to certain parents, the fact that if a coach is interested in Johnny Jones, and he, you know, may be a borderline student at Clarkson or St. Lawrence or something, the fact that they're playing sports gets them over the hump and gives them that opportunity to go to that school, when in fact they may not have had that opportunity in the past. So, that's, it, it's, I guess, your point, your point is well-taken, and it, and it also, I think, is part of the entire mosaic of looking at the entire program and what are the options and opportunities kids have to further their education, or go into a training program, or going into the services and then, you know, a strong background, and additional opportunities they might not have had if in fact we didn't have those co-curricular programs or extracurricular programs in sports or what have you. It does make a difference, every little bit makes a difference, and it affects kids' future, career, college, college and thing they're going to. And then, of course, with the scholarships, too, that's nice money also, if they can get it.
Thank you. Anything else? Great, thank you, Jay, that's just terrific. It's, it's great to hear about those, those innovative ways that people are making and saving money. Paul, I see over my shoulder that we appear to be ready.
You seem to be back online.
Okay, terrific.
We're no longer in London.
No, it was London, duh, 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 duh. Floor's yours.
It's great to be in living color. Two weeks ago, poor Carrie and I had to do a presentation for the new anti-litter committee before the town council, and they weren't even able to power up the system. So, we, we had to...
Well, we have offered in the past to help our town brethren with technology services.
Clearly, systems don't always work like we expect them to. And just before we launch into this, I'd like to piggyback onto Jay's comments and mention that we currently have four high school students working at BA Systems this summer in an eight-week Academy of Finance internship. They're all doing a very nice job, and one of them is Michael Brown from Londonderry. And we're hoping that they are learning something about working in the business world and getting some career direction from that experience. So, no further ado, here's our agenda. We're going to give you a quick overview of the program's results this year, and then get into some details of what's been going on specific to the school district. Let's see. This gives you an idea of the relative weighting of volunteers in each of the major groups, and you can see that the largest number of volunteers come from school groups. Fully 40% of all volunteers were students or faculty members, working on property or off property elsewhere in the neighborhoods.
And the large, 23% of those scouting groups, a large number of those also volunteered at the schools.
And then, another look at things in terms of numbers of groups, you can see that school groups were among the top three numbers of types of groups that were out there beautifying the town. Now, do we have the overview slide, Carrie?
Yeah, it's down further. Got to, didn't move it up.
Okay, well, we'll come to that. So, why don't you go ahead and talk about the specifics?
So, we had, as Paul mentioned, a large number of school groups and organizations. I do want to say that Chuck Zapala and Linda Kucha were instrumental and a big help in getting more groups involved, and we hope to, you know, expand and invite more groups to participate each year, because there's a lot of, you know, locations in schools that I, I don't know, Panther Park and Lacrosse Field, there's so many different names, and they know what needs to be done and, and what group is good for the job, as far as raking and cleaning up versus mulching and planting flowers. So, they were a big help. So, at the high school this year, we had three, three groups from the high school. The Londonderry High School Community Service Club, they cleaned around the garden in the front sign. The football team, they did a wonderful job cleaning the track, Lacrosse Fields, Panther Park, Par 5, and around the building. And the student-teacher club did the courtyard. And there's the football team.
Or most of them.
Most of them. At the middle school, we had the recycling club clean up around the school. They were supposed to also spread mulch, but there was a miscommunication with the mulch, so that wound up being spread, I think, by the custodians, but they did a good job cleaning up litter. And the tornado team did an instrumental job cleaning up Sergeant Road and Skate Park.
Which they do every year, don't they?
Yes, and they, they, he puts that as part of his education, they tally, I think they do whole reports on how much trash is picked up and do reports.
That was your son's team, wasn't it, John?
At Matthew Thornton, we had a Boy Scout group clean up the memorial garden in the courtyard before the nice mural presentation, which was great. And the Daisy Troop planted flowers at the front sign and the entrance. And at North Elementary School, we had the Cub Scout Park, Cub Scout Pack, I'm sorry, spread mulch, as they usually do every year, they, they're a big group. A Daisy Troop planted the flowers around the sign, and the Girl Scout Troop planted flowers around the entrance. There's your Daisy Troop. And at South, a lot of work was on itself. Brownie Troop, flowers were planted in the whiskey barrels, the mulch was spread by the Cub Scout Pack, I think, again, they've, they've done this in past years. Daisy Troop planted flowers. Mrs. Duval's fifth grader's cleaned up around the school, as I mentioned earlier, she does a whole educational segment where I, I go in and, and we, I talk to the class, and then they get all excited and they go out and pick up trash. And the South School staff, headed by Gail Moretti, they're always big in expanding and planting their garden and keeping it clean. There's Mrs. Duval's fifth grade class. And at Moose Hill, we had the Coon family and friends spread mulch and plant flowers. And the National Honor Society, you know, we wanted to recognize them because they were a school group, they picked up litter along Stonehenge and Auburn roads. So, we had a lot of mulch donated by local landscapers, 58 yards total, and you can see the breakdown of how much was donated. Why at the high school? Because they were going to blow it in, I think, and they couldn't blow it in.
Budget, huh?
A budget, yeah, besides that. So...
Explains why they're chopping down the trees.
Because I don't think there was any money in the budget for mulch for the school, so it's nice to get it all donated. Just want to show you a comparison between 2010 and 2011. This is our, there's three of us on this committee before Carolyn O'Connor organized it and coordinated it. So, this was our second year, kind of had to get our feet wet last year. And you can see that we've kind of got the gist of it, and we've improved and included and added groups and individuals, and we hope to keep that number going in years. This was your statistics that you were asking about earlier.
So, great. So, this is an overview for all the groups across the town, and you can see that there was great growth in the number of groups, the number of volunteers, exponentially in the number of tires, 419 of which all came from one location on the railway. Number of streets increased by more than 50%. All six schools were able to do work on, and 10 or 11 different sites around town. So, as Carrie mentioned, we're very excited in the growth of the volunteer effort, and we want to continue that momentum next year. Through this. And...
So, just to summarize, 16 groups beautified the schools, and 58 yards of mulch were donated as well as flowers.
So, lastly, look into next year. We had a thought that it would, it would be helpful if we could work with a lead at each school, if there is an interested person at a given school who would like to take on that role, to look at what the particular requirements are at their particular school and work directly with us to help us identify what needs to be done, and then we can send the volunteer groups to that school with specific instructions and get the work done promptly. So, that's one of the things we'll be working with Chuck and Linda on and other members of the schools to see if, and maybe the principals can help us, too. If there's an individual who has a personal interest in this, then that would be ideal, and to the extent we can find people like that, Gail Moretti might be an example at South, who, who could communicate with us and, and help us do a still better job and broader effort at each school. Donations, believe it or not, even with 58 yards of mulch, we still turn down mulch from two or three contractors, and we always get generous donations of plants and perennials from Benson's and Shady Hill Nurseries, and we barely made a dent in those donations. Benson's every year makes available 50 perennials, and as I say, we left a lot of those donations on the table, so we hope to make higher utilization of that for the benefit of the schools and the town property as a whole. Thirdly, we're always looking to encourage more groups to volunteer, and last year, I don't know if it's a self-image problem, but we want to assure the district office that they, there's a place for them in the beautification effort as well. A few moments ago, I took a walk around the corner, and this was kind of representative of what I found. Decorating the outskirts of, not bad, but we think we can do better.
And now you killed it.
Didn't have too far to go.
It was our project.
You already said you can take care of them.
Terrible.
So...
We'll take some of those perennials that are left over, won't we?
Happy to talk to you after, after the meeting, but very pleased to be able to be a part of this for the town and the benefit of the school, particularly as budgets get more and more difficult to prepare, and we look forward to working with the school district again next year.
Thank you. Comments from the board?
Couple of lobster, couple of lobster traps to go with our takeout.
Yeah. Weather dinghies, things like that. Other comments?
Yeah, Paul, you've been doing this for a lot of years, and we really appreciate the effort that you and the team puts together on the beautification of Londonderry. It's been a tremendous success over the years, and the community, I know myself personally, appreciate all the work that your, your group does. Thank you very much.
On behalf of the volunteers, Carrie, and the others, I certainly appreciate your words, and, and we have enjoyed doing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Is there any other business to come before the meeting this evening? Seeing none, we have a non-public session scheduled this evening. May I have a motion?
So, move under RSA 91A3, section 2, A through F.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote, all those in favor, please hi, John Robinson. Any opposed? Negative? We are now in non-public, thank you very much, everybody.